All right, good evening. We've concluded an executive session. We're now in open session, regular meeting of the City Council on Monday, January 8. I invite everyone to join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. The next item is on the agenda, is a public comment. Does anyone wish to comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four. This is regarding the Development Review Board and candidate interviews. In particular, we're here to make appointments to the DRB, and part of this connects back to our last City Council meeting. Give me a second. Chip, do you want to walk us through the recommendation?
Yes. At the last meeting, Denny Lapointe and Dick Thayer were considered for the Development Review Board. The Council interviewed them, and you wished to appoint them to the Board. However, you had not heard yet from Owen Mannahan about his expiring seat, and you also wanted to hear from alternate Judith Leonard on whether she'd like to seek the other open regular seat. So you appointed Denny and Dick to alternates for the time being, and you extended Owen's term. Owen communicated to staff that he would like to seek his seat. Judith communicated that she's fine staying as an alternate. So right now what you have is Owen before you for his regular seat. There is another regular seat that will be open. Staff recommends that perhaps from one of the other two alternates, that being Denny and Dick, you might consider one of them for the regular seat.
Okay. Great. So, let's see, we have in our packet a reminder of the applications we reviewed last time around. Does anyone -- so we have Owen Mannahan wishing to continue. Any motions to be made? Have we want to do this all together, or does anyone want to do the whole slip?
I'm okay doing that. We can continue.
So we'll need to -- Denny Lapointe is here this evening. He indicated at the last meeting he was interested in an open seat. You could do that. We'll still have one. So Judith and Dick as alternates, Denny and Owen.
Are we appointing Owen to his seat, or are we going to decide between the three of them for the two seats? I guess that's what I'm curious about.
Ah, okay, great. So I'll make a recommendation that we...
Are you looking for a recommendation, or are you making one?
I'll take a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Owen Mannahan to his seat, ending 12/31/2020, and we appoint Dick Thayer to the other open seat, again, ending 12/31 -- actually, yeah, 12/31/2020, and Denny Lapointe, an alternate, ending 12/31/2020.
And Judith remains.
Judith is not up.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay. Further discussion, and we have members in the public that wish to comment after.
Chip, did you say there was going to be another opening?
There's been an open seat for a while. That's the other opening that...
Oh, is this the open seat that's on our schematic?
Yes. And part of the direction was you both wanted to find out if Judith wanted that.
I'm sure she does.
Your answer is that she's fine in her alternate seat for now.
Okay.
That's fine. Any further discussion?
Are both Denny and Dick seeking the other open seat?
They both indicated interest. Denny is here, he can speak to this. He indicated that he would be interested, as did Mr. Thayer, in the open seat as opposed to the alternate seat.
Now, there's a motion on the floor. I mean, has he contended? Where is Denny?
Denny's in the third row.
Would you be content to remain as an alternate at this point, or?
Yes, I would be fine. It's just my opportunity as an alternate.
I just didn't know if you wanted a chance to be heard. If you want a chance to be heard, we hear you.
My understanding of the motion is...
I'm uncomfortable with alternate...
Okay.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Thayer is the open seat that you recommended.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Great, thank you. We've got a second reading of land development regulations for street corridor protection. Chip is on board.
Thank you very much. Stream corridor protection rules have been proposed as land development rights. As we discussed, this is part of our MS4 permits meant to prevent erosion in our city streams. And we -- one of the things the Council requested at the last meeting is that a list of properties that are known to order a book and would be included within the proposed street corridor, the proposed stripteering buffer, that they be included, and we included that in this packet, and that list can also be kept in the City Clerk's office and the uppermost office as requested. Other than that, there were no changes made to the proposed amendment from the last meeting.
All righty. Questions or comments?
Okay, so I noticed that there's five unknowns here on the back.
Yeah, those are -- those are open land parcels that are probably assigned to others that are appearing as condos elsewhere on the list, because we went from the parcel maps, and there are some parcels on the parcel maps that are orphaned parcels or random city parcels.
So are you telling me that those are city parcels? They belong to the city of San Albans?
They don't belong to a property that aren't on the grand list. You know that.
Okay. So I thought that every property in the city was on the grand list.
There's a difference between the -- the grand list is every property in the city.
Right.
That's a fact. The parcel maps, when the parcel maps are created, sometimes you'll get little orphaned parcels or common land that's assigned to condominiums, and each of the condominiums shows up in the grand list, and then the common land shows up as a -- that's like one of the...
So those are common lands within the condominiums that are on the grand list but are also on this list?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Motion?
Well, funny word, Mayor. I wasn't here the last meeting. I didn't vote on the first reading. Am I allowed to vote on the second reading, or should I refuse? Abstaining, I should say.
Okay.
Then I move to adopt the second reading as drafted on the street.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Jim and a second to adopt the amendments for the street corridor protection.
Yes.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Thanks, Chip. Next, liquor control. Take a motion to recess for liquor control.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call liquor control to order. And Sue, there you are. Next item of business is a liquor license approval, up for discussion in early. Good evening. This is for La Casa Burrito.
Yes.
A new enterprise seeking a first-class liquor business.
And I do have a copy of the floor plan. You have a copy of the liability insurance, and my dissection rate is forthcoming. And we will probably agree about here and there.
Okay. Shannon Smith is here to answer any questions.
So is she going to have to apply for this again in like 45 days? Are you aware of that?
Yes.
In April. You know, this one here is going to be expiring April 4th. So in March, unfortunately.
Okay, you're aware of that.
Let's talk to her.
So be quick, because you're working for it, Chip.
I have about 12 people hired, a few full-time and mostly part-time.
So you know that all those who serve alcohol are going to have to go through your program, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm actually going to open, even if I get the liquor license before I open. I'm actually going to wait a couple of weeks before I start doing it, to make sure everybody's properly trained and everything's in place.
Anybody care to...
Make a motion to approve the application.
Second. Second by Spooner. All right, all in favor? Anybody opposed, abstaining? We've got minutes of the previous meeting, November 13, 2017.
We'll watch you.
Yes, thank you.
Motion approved, then.
Second. Second by Spooner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
For two extensions.
One extension. Motion carries. Is there any other business? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. And now, Chip, you're back. Second reading of the City ordinance amendment regarding Market Street traffic direction.
Market Street.
How to schedule.
Yep, second reading. This would codify the new traffic direction on Market Street, which is one way southbound.
Questions?
Has that parking been utilized pretty well on that street?
I've seen it utilized. I haven't seen it pulled up, but I haven't been checking it out at all.
Is that under the same two-hour, four-hour, with this open market, right?
It's open right now.
Yeah. I don't think I've worked caught on it yet, along the street.
You call up me and keep wanting to go down, and I say, whoa, whoa.
Right, it's a second reading.
Can you move it up?
Any comments from the public?
Oh, sorry.
Seeing none?
Move it up.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Thanks. Okay, let's see. Chip, adoption of municipal policies for VCDP program.
We, if you remember, we recently were granted some VCDP from our community development program funds. They're passing through to Chinatown Housing Trust, so they can operate their local income home repair loan program, which can be used by many people in the city. And as you know, every time you use VCDP money, there are a lot of strings that come attached. And one of them is that we need to show that we've adopted some policies and codes that are compliant with existing city policies. We did this in August, but then I found out they had updated the form slightly in March, and somehow that was not available online, so we just need to re-update this slightly updated form, re-adopt this form tonight, for VCDP grants.
Do you know, Denny, feedback on how participation is in the program?
They're currently still working through the agreement, but I can get an update on how the program is going right now. They're still -- they have an ongoing program that's underway right now, and with the grant they got from us, they'll be able to extend it a few years. It's a good program. We have some properties we would like to point their ways, for sure.
Do we make that information available when people come to the City Council?
Yeah, I think we need to do more.
You know, maybe a postcard, not just a simple flyer and a direct mailing, once the agreement's hammered out, how long the terms are. You don't go all the way, and this is a home run.
Yeah, we can do a full process and just mail it out to everybody.
Maybe we can get some coverage in the paper.
Yes.
For further discussion, I vote out, I move to adopt the municipal policies for the VCDP program.
Second.
Question, am I reading correctly? This is nothing new that we haven't seen, it's just they didn't have it in the line, so we have to re-improve it? Is that what I'm seeing?
That's my understanding, yes.
So what impact does this have on the city staff time? Is it a lot of effort for you guys? Is it going to be an impact for you?
It's not a lot of effort. Every time, there are going to be reports that will go through me, and I'll have to load it onto the state's website, but it's really along the lines of a lot of the other neighborhood revitalization activities. It's worth it in terms of staff time, and it's...
Helps to improve the quality of housing.
Yeah, and it falls in line with the other things we're doing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, motion carries. We are way ahead of schedule, and I suspect that where there's interest in the budget discussion, the police request for the street crimes unit. So we...
No, hold on, Chip.
Where are we?
We're kind of following Chip's stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's press on.
Okay, budget proposal fiscal year 19.
Yeah. Tom, you want to drive me up there? David, as chairman of the public, can I amputate you to hand out some things?
Sure.
It's one of those. One of these. Rashawn, you've got a media pack, right?
Thank you.
Well, here first, from Don and from Tom, and then we have an opportunity for Finance Chair comments, that will come from Tim Hawkins, Council discussion, and that will be followed by public discussion.
Okay. I'll do my best not to blow this. For the cover number on your packet, and you're probably going to run copies of that, but for anybody who's interested, we can certainly make it available. So I thought I'd hit on a couple of themes, give you a sense of the dynamic at play in the budget, what drives it, some of the policy choices embedded within it, and then we'll walk through the major departments. We'll start broad and we'll go narrow. There's three major drivers in this year's budget. The first is a proposed street crimes unit in the police department. The chief police and some staff are here to present on that and write in detail a little bit later, but as outlined in the packet, the chief police is a recent tip point with our reference to drug usage and the later property trends in the city of San Albans. Over the last five years, we've stabilized the police department, and there's been a lot of good work to accomplish that, such as regionalization, salary parity, and capital planning, but we're still unable to put the laser focus on street crimes that's necessary to drive the drugs out of our community. The police officers we have have a lot on their plate with the day-to-day responding to calls and proactive patrols, and they're not able to put the laser focus on the drug work. This proposal asks for two more officers to serve exclusively as investigators in the street crimes unit. We wouldn't just suck them to the day-to-day. The chief has approached Tannis in Albans to provide 50% of the funding, and that's represented in the budget. Our share is equal to their share of $110,000. The second major driver in the other direction is the creation of the stormwater utility. This is proposed to begin in FY19, so July. Enclosed in your packet is a draft budget for the stormwater utility, and we'll shift over to there at some point if appropriate. As you're well aware, the city is designated as an MS4 community, and because of that, we incur a series of obligations to fix our impaired streams. Broad strokes, EPA has given us five years to come up with a plan and 20 years to fix the stream. We're roughly about halfway through the five-year period. We have long envisioned funding these planning requirements and the public improvements by creating stormwater utility. Like water and wastewater, stormwater utilities are funded by providing a service, and there are no exemptions. Much of this work to date has been funded by the general fund. This budget proposes shifting some of those costs out of the Planning and Development Department into the stormwater utility and increasing some of the funding flowing through the utility to catch up with some of our obligations. The third piece is continued implementation of the neighborhood sidewalk fund. This budget increases the debt service capacity to $275,000. Our target is $300,000. This is responsible for about 1% of the proposed tax increase. Overall, this budget proposes a 3.6% increase in property taxes. 2.4% of that is due to the street crimes unit, and 1.2% is due to the neighborhood So with that, we'll turn to the budget itself, and just a couple of thematic comments to start us off. And so, in front of the cover page, it just shows you the 2% change in taxes that we're proposing, 3.6%. It shows again the impact on median value of the city residents, which we believe is $200,000.
Can we just talk through that for folks that are listening on Channel 15?
Do you want to actually talk through this?
Just speak to what the impact is on an average.
Sure. So $200,000 is roughly our median number. It's what we've used as far we've been presenting this. So we simply take that, multiply it by the rate, and we show the increase year to year. So it works out to be 63, 76, with over $15 a quarter for the typical property owner.
Thanks.
The next page is spending by major category. This is a handy way to get a quick sense of what's driving this budget this year and historically. So if you look at personnel, and you scroll over to column K, the change from -- and this is citywide, the change in 2010 is $133,000. From last year, that's a 4% increase, but from 2014, that's a 6% increase. So we, in order to compare apples to apples, we stripped out the new officers. So setting that aside, you can see there hasn't been a lot of growth since 2014, and the bulk of it is staffing increase of a proposal for this year in the police department. Other trends are laid out for retirement. We call your attention to health benefits. Tom's done some amazing work in producing a 0.1% increase in healthcare costs since 2019. Matty's done with that with asking the town's attention to workers' comp. That's up a little bit less than 6%. The debt services increase is driven in large part by the increase in neighborhood sidewalks that's proposed. Legal fees are down. There isn't a lot of action then in county and regional functions. Streetscape maintenance has increased over time. It was recently 2014, and we've just been at 13 on it, but we seem to have leveled out at about $50,000 a year on our streetscape costs. And I'll talk about the other ones as we dive into the departments. We have questions, if they come along, we don't need a whole, we can just load them The next sheet is a sheet that Council Hawkins envisioned, and it does a similar thing to the earlier sheet, goes back to FY14, but it does it by department, instead of by category. And I'm almost ready to jump into the heart of it. It always comes up in budget times, well, how many staff, just those that we have, how's it increased or decreased over time? In 2019, we are proposing 75 total, 75 and a half total employees. Nearly 10 years ago, we had 74. Even with the additional police officers, we're not looking at a huge spike. There's some bounce in that number from year to year, and most of the last 10 years, it's trended down, but...
And restorative justice has gone from 2 to 9.5. There's been a small-city contribution to restorative justice, or before that, court diversion, a few thousand dollars, I think it's $10,000 the last few years, but when you factor that in, in essence, city government's down 10%, court diversion balances it out.
And court diversion is not funded by property taxes, primarily funded through grants.
Through grants. So even with the addition of those FTDs, we're essentially leveling down.
Yep.
Page five is the cover sheet that goes in the report and some of the documents that get mailed out and run up to the budget vote. You'll notice in the far right, property taxes are shown here, it's 4.1, and that's due to some modest increase gross to the grand list. We'll dive into the detail in that, department by department.
Okay, and just to be clear, you're talking about the revenues from property taxes increasing...
Not the taxes.
Not the taxes.
Yeah, exactly. You want your tax rate to go up less than your revenue. Okay, we'll take a great big breath, and we're diving in. First department is Finance Administration. A couple of things I would draw your attention to, and you can take a deeper dive if you'd like. I would highlight line 38, the vital stabilization funds has increased slightly over the last few years, but we may have level funded from last year at $13,000. The TIF transfer in lines 43 and 44 is, these are expenditures now. Last year, we proposed a transfer of 162. This year, we're proposing to transfer 147. The bulk of that, there's two pieces to that transfer. The first is the increment that's created by the personal property tax, and the second is the, in our TIF agreement with the state, we're only required to put in 75% of the municipal increment. We've been putting in 100 to stabilize the TIF, and based on the success and the help of the TIF, we're in position to back that off a little bit. The other thing I'd highlight is the lines 48, the HRA, accrued time costs. It's a variation of what we were showing earlier, but we like to see health insurance costs moving in the right direction. If you look to the bottom of Finance Administration, I guess one more thing I would highlight is our legal expenses. We think we can cut a little bit. We propose to cut $12,000 down. And this department doesn't have any non-property tax revenues, so it just shows as total expenditures. Many of the other departments will show a figure called net, net operations, and that's the amount that's supported by the taxpayer. But here, you can... But here, you have total expenditures of just under a million, and it's just down by 5%. Not a lot of activity in the City Clerk's office. We are beginning to plan for a new clerk in some swift transition, but here is a place where you see at the bottom line an operations figure. City clerk functions, of course, are spread across the fund, could involve a work figure to support enterprise funds. Last year, the voters were just under 20, 19, and they're essentially just over 8 this year. Just over $20,000 this year, so kind of a $1,000 increase. Takes us to page nine, which is Planning and Development. On line 42, you see that the city marketing campaign survives. We've done some work in FY, continues is a better word than survives. We've done some work this year developing some promotional materials, primarily around the marketing of this building. We've been working really closely with Messenger, Clinton, and Design for that. We still haven't quite hit our stride with marketing the city as a whole. We think, you know, there's great potential there to have a campaign for St. Albans and partner some of the large employers in the region to help us really round out that campaign, maybe looking at some media buys, but really help tell our story first on the map. Line 27, jumping back up a little bit, is the Stormwater work that I was referencing earlier with the MS4. We cut $30,000 out of the budget this year, and that's moved over to the Stormwater Utility, and that's why in large part, the bottom line, net operations has decreased from 337 to 291. So unless there's objection, I'd be inclined to switch over and do a brief tour through the Stormwater Utility. Counsel will recall, we had a draft first reading of this budget a month and a half or so ago, based on some of the feedback and questions we received there, and substantially pared back the Stormwater, proposed Stormwater Utility. We're showing total expenses of $156,000. As outlined in the cover memo, the proposed impact could be about $2.50 per month for equivalent residential unit. An equivalent residential unit is based on the amount of impervious surface you have. Generally speaking, it's a house, but it's not, it's not based on the size of the house or the value of the house, based on the amount of impervious. This $156,000 is made up of a small contribution to offset some of the stormwater costs that were in the upper parts, $10,000, $4,000 for some of the stormwater-related permits. The lion's share is in our professional services, 42.5, which has to do with all of the consultants that we're hiring to prepare the flow reduction plans. That's the big one, $30,000. Also to review some of the development proposals that are coming in, perform some of that education that we're required to perform under the MS4 program. We hired the Regional Planning Commission for that. We have a contract with the state for surface water monitoring, jumping down then to maintenance of stormwater treatment. We've got 15,000 in. This has to do with the corneal issue of who maintains the rain gardens after they get built. So we envision hiring one of our landscape contractors to take care of that. There's another large slug of money under the CIP. For Stormwater Treatment, we've got these various projects around the city that in order to get the grant funds for, we need to advance to the final design. The vision is that some of these funds that will be used in the early stages to hire the consultants to design the projects, but then with voter approval, will be rolled over to debt service capacity in the future years. So we wouldn't spend $30,000 every year on design, for example. And we've also got some funds allocated for debt service on the street sweeper and a debt service reserve in light of future projects.
And just so there's, I'm not surprised if adopted administratively, would this be on your water bills? Simply the cheapest, most efficient way for us to do that.
So if this isn't, this $2.60 or whatever a month, that's not including in the increase that you're going to see on a $200,000 house?
Correct.
No, it's not a general fund.
Not a general fund. That would show up in the water, water and wastewater bills.
Okay.
So somebody's going to make a determination what kind of impervious surface we have, and that fee is then assessed by the city. It's going to be on the water bill, and it's across the board. There's no exemption on any other property.
Correct.
And we've done a lot of scrubbing of the day already, so we're a long way down that road in terms of being administratively ready.
So people could still do projects to minimize that impact, though, right?
Not if they just build a brand-new garage, and they're concerned about the amount of impervious surface that could...
Yeah. Put it in their yard. Put it in their bank card.
And just so that you can put the word out, what is your projection based on the cost you presented to us this year over the next three years? And is that rate likely to change?
I think the first draft had this at about $300,000 across the state. We tend to see them clustering around, then the country at around $5 a month. I think it's likely to go up from the 250. I'm not sure that we're very different from some of the other communities that have utilities and that were a historic community. Most of our development is redevelopment. You know, so Top Bronton isn't a good benchmark, for instance. That said, our strength is our weakness in that it can be really expensive to do some of the retrofits because we don't have the land to do it. So it's definitely going to go up over time. Heading that $300,000 within those three years seems steep. I don't think we're going to quite hit that. But it's really the design process that's going to be occurring over the next year or two, that will inform what those rates do. And ultimately, before we do a large Stormwater project, we would come back to the voters and pass a bond, and, you know, it might be phased in so that the impact occurs over three or five years, so.
And the other thing is the mitigation factor of the property owner. What is that? How will that affect the funds that we're trying to, the expenses that we're trying to recover or we're trying to get by having the rate? Will that mean if one person has the ability to mitigate and other people don't, that they're going to suffer because their rates are going to go up?
I don't know yet, Tim. Yes, it's, I think some of the people, it depends on the character and constraints of the property. Some very large properties might have more opportunities to treat it, but they also might have a big sludge of impervious, you know, that's harder for them to deal with. So. I don't know if it's a time for me to say. Chip, do you want to say to speak to that issue?
What we've been advised to do is to come up with a, let's call it a credit manual, which is the city's policy for looking at treatment that people install on their own property and figuring out to what extent that's credited toward their stormwater fee. The city council can entertain a whole range of policy questions when you do that, such as the questions you're raising, Tim. To what degree are we going to reward people for treating on their own land, knowing that that little bit gets passed on to everybody else? Do we let someone credit their entire stormwater fee when we know that there's an administrative cost just having a stormwater program in general? You know, people, maybe everyone should pay a little bit, but you get 50% reduction if you treat all the stormwater on your property. We'll be able to bring all those issues to the city council for your consideration if it's looking like the utility's something you want to go down the road of.
The end result is we're trying to mitigate water, impervious service runoff into the lake. And so I'm hoping, and I think everyone's in agreement, that the city will come up with measures to help people do those things so that they're not worried that we're just trying to come up with another tax, because that's not what we're trying to do.
That's right. I mean, normally, credits are for two reasons. One is people are treating on their land, and they're helping the entire community meet its goals. And two is if we give credits, we incentivize people doing treatment on their land. So yeah, we're saying the same thing.
And just to talk about the alternative, if we're not doing this type of a program, what is the risk in terms of meeting MS4 compliance?
Who knows how bad it could get, but dealing with penalties from EPA and EDC, consent degrees from courts, getting sued by the CLF. And also, we want, the city wants to be able to say it's doing its part for St. Albans Bay. And this is, we've been talking about this for a long time, and this is that big concrete step that we've known is coming to solve this problem and do our part to turn that corner.
And we shouldn't be afraid of it.
Next cost center is assessing. As many of you are aware, that we consolidated our assessing function into an office of Property Services headed by Dave Southwick. He's now the city assessor and getting some additional training for that new role. There's not a lot of activity here from a budget perspective. However, there's a modest change in net operations. We've moved from 31 to 36. But we're also beginning to save money for a reappraisal. Let's see, on line 28, they have a reappraisal reserve that gets created in the process for $10,000, but that's newfound money. I'm going to hand over to Tom to go to the debt service.
Couple highlights I want to hit. There's always, every year, there's minor changes with police and Public Works Department especially. But just something to note, it doesn't seem that far away from me at least, but in fiscal year '21, about $45,000 in debt goes away. That'll be significant. I know that's two years away, but it'll be near sooner than it is. Overall, debt is up about $82,000. Most of that's for the Neighborhood Sidewalks, and we're getting all the close to $300,000 we'll need to service the debt long-term. On the Neighborhood Sidewalks case specifically, from a managerial perspective, the minute the bond is approved by the voters, we could go up there and borrow the full amount. But there's no point in doing that if they don't have the expenses. We spent about 1.6 in sidewalks so far. We haven't borrowed that much. What we have borrowed is short-term at very low interest. This winter, I'm converting the first tranche of that, a million dollars even, to longer-term debt, and then next year, we'll reevaluate and do the same. We have the opportunity to do that, generally speaking, in the summer and the winter. No point in borrowing it when you don't need it. So we look at our cash flow each day and how many borrowing we actually absolutely really need to borrow. We don't run our cash well, but if we've got a few land buffs in the bank on day one, we've got an invoice for $100,000. I don't need to borrow to pay that invoice. I can just pay it, and we've gone with life. So we're trying to manage that pretty carefully to save interest along the way. The other real piece, just want to point out, the police, and Gary can speak about this further, there's a new utility vehicle. That's not a sport utility vehicle, that's a vehicle designed to get to further fun places during the winter, get down the railroad tracks, have potential use up at the water reservoir if needed. One of the big priorities for this year. In Public Works, there's also a new sidewalk plow. That's our third one. The first one is on its last legs. It's broken down repeatedly over the last few years and given the investment in sidewalks. That's a huge priority for ours. There's also a new street sweeper in the budget that's been purchased already, and most of that is paid for by Stormwater. That's 80% Stormwater Fund. That's the debt highlights. Overall, a little over $8,000, and most of that's in sidewalks.
So, Tom, you notice the, this new snow pad's not in here? Is that because we're not paying for it, or am I just not seeing it?
It's money in, money out. So we're, in theory, it's our legal debt instrument, but we're not servicing it, so it's not in here.
Okay.
Could be a future preference.
Okay, that takes us on to the Fire Department. There aren't staffing changes, there aren't equipment changes, but there are some new revenues. You recall a couple of years ago, we had a second building inspector, so that we began doing commercial building inspections as well. That's steadily increased from $17,000 in 2014. Now, we're proposing 65 in FY19. On the budget as of the end of November, we're at 52, 65 is appropriately conservative to my seven. That's probably the biggest change is we're ramping up that program. I think I had a really good idea in the Finance Committee of exploring our opportunity to regionalize that service, similar to some of our other public safety services. I think that's a no-brainer, so definitely get on that. Bottom line, net operations in the Fire Department moved from $345,000 to $312,000 this year. Very tempted to move that.
Are we continuing to utilize our ability to work with the town of St. Albans to consolidate where we can and save where we can? Where are we with that stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. We're continuing to utilize and explore that. You know, operationally, we're kind of there. If you go to Fire, they respond as one. It's taken us a little bit to address some of the administrative and transactional elements and figuring out how do we go further and how do we deal with full-timers who report through one chain of command as an employee but might report to another chain of command as a call-force firefighter. How does that impact the planning for the public safety facility, because police move with and without fire? And, you know, candidly, some of it's gotten wrapped up in the desire for a water and wastewater removal in St. Albans Town. There's only so many, so many balls we can roll uphill at one party at one time, so we're still making a lot of progress on both of those. Functionally, we're there. It's just a matter of, I'm not sure we're going to save a whole lot more money by aligning. I think we'll be administratively more, maybe on the capital side, beginning to save some money as well, and that's still very much in play. Okay, Police Department, I'll run through my version as part of the budget and kind of wrap up the budget as a whole, and now turn over to the chief and his team to do the deep dive. Number of drivers in the Public Safety Department. One of the big ones is the evaporation of all the federal monies. You see that on line nine with the $1,000 grant. It's a big amount of $5,000 hole in the budget. At the same time, if you drop down to salaries, there's two things going on. The first is existing salary by now, and we're proposing another $155,000 add. Last year, we were at one, just under, just under two, 1.19, and this year, we're proposing a little 1.35. The drivers there is everything that we talked about at the beginning, everything we wanted in our police department, which is a stable, mature police department where you weren't constantly losing officers. constantly losing officers to other departments. And now we've got them, so we don't have vacancy saves. They stick around, and now they have families and own houses. That's good. That's the big picture. But it also requires us to budget for it. So that's the first increase. The second increase is the two new investigators that we've talked about, and 220 total, half of which is ours. That's the, that's the nad of it. The police, that had an increase on salaries, as you can imagine, we squeezed the heck out of everything else. But the only thing that made it through the sieve was the utility vehicle, which was very strongly lobbied for by the department as an unmet need for many, many years now. Next cost center is dispatch operations. Plant field dispatch, I think, is improving. You'll recall that over the last two years, the marketplace changed radically in that there was some smaller operations in Middlebury that were offering rock-bottom prices. Similarly, the Chittenden County communities were offering prices that were very much discounted what we were able to offer our two-county service. So we lost all the grand in Grand Isle County and some other smaller operations in Franklin County. Couple of those have begun to come back. We're optimistic that as Chittenden County fully regionalizes, that Grand Isle will then come back to Franklin County as part of our two-county system again. So, you know, we had a hot, on the revenue side, we had a high watermark, making 15 of almost 700,000 last year. Two years ago, we were down to 542, last year, we're at 473. This year, we think we can get back to 517. The chief's done a lot of great work in picking up some small contracts here and there, threading the needle between recovering what we need to recover and being competitive in the marketplace.
When municipalities elect us and back, what's the reason?
Small reduction in salaries from last year, 390. Previous year, in light of the evaporation in service contracts, we went too low, just under 360. So we think we're at a better funding level this year at 375. Bottom line, net operations, line 47. St. Olens City taxpayers are paying, last year, they paid 243, this year, they're paying 217, so 17% reduction. Home control is the next page. There's a lot of action there. Always helps us. Recent revenue, 15 years, 15,000. This year, we're up 17. I think we've begun to iron out some of the programmatic bumps there. We were receiving a lot of complaints over response time and quality of service. We've made some staffing changes. I think that's going better. We've got a new person on the job and a better arrangement there. If things up to record issue, I'm going to hand off to Tom.
The first place I'd like to direct is to the last page of their budget, which is page 22 in your packet. Roughly, total revenues are 450 and total expenses are 550. Net operations are basically unchanged from the prior year, down $3,000. There's this constant push-pull and wreck. Dom and I are always talking with Kelly about it. She's always growing her programs, and that requires more staffing for the programs. We're always trying to push back on the staffing piece, but not always successful. Few things I want to hit on the highlights. Under, under the runs and races, we're not eliminating anything. We had a, used to have a separate lineup for the SAC round, a separate one for the war round, that's just one lineup in there. Day camp, which is line 10, back to page 19, $15,000 increase there. We think that's totally justified. Your budget actual as of today is where we've all set our budget for the year, we've got about $150,000 in revenues. Most of that's billed in the summer at the start of the fiscal year, so we're pretty confident looking at last year's numbers that we're going to go to prove that we're there. Going down a little further to 2018, the town reimbursement fees, that's up 2,500 bucks, and we think that's also conservative. We just sent out the bill for the last quarter of 2018, and that's up 2,500. So we think the number we gave you a week or two ago is really good. Going down to the pool, and you'll see this in both the revenues and the expenses, the pool is basically level funded on both sides of the leisure. The big change is we hosted regional swim meets last year, and because of that, we sold a lot more concessions. We won't sell them this year, and we won't buy them either. There's not a lot of profit margin, and that's where I was, but there's a modest one. Going down to page 20, just want to point out a couple of minor things. Line 84, there's a small increase in day camp expenditures. Much of that is the events, the places they take the kids to, sometimes the minor purchases for activities and food and things like that. And then going down to line 95, the pool, there's a bunch of other programs, minimum wage is up. And we have a lot of bicyclists that we hired on minimum wage, and so that's going to raise our expenses just a shade. Down to page 21, again, in the pool, there's the concessions decrease in the expenditure Going down a little further into the CIP, we have a small item, $1,000 for the barrow furnace. We considered just putting this in operations, which we normally would for something this small, but we just wanted to highlight it. We've had ongoing issues with the furnace. We get it running every year, it needs some work every year. It's an older building, it's an older heating system. It's highlighted here because we may have a bigger item in a future year to do something more substantial if we, we're basically having need of that. We had $10,000 in for pool capital assessment last year. If not spent, that'll be reserved and moved towards the assessment for 2018. So in essence, we've got $20,000 for that lower assessment. And then Hard Act, we continued funding that at $10,000. When Dom gets to public works, he can hit that. We also put some in the public works budget to maintain Hard Act. So we've overall got at least a level of money increase for Hard Act. But again, pool is a level funded across the board. The net cost of theirs is down by $3,000 compared to last year for rec overall.
Thanks.
Next cost center is public works. On line 10, you see debt proceeds. That's for a mini excavator, which is probably the essential piece of equipment for all the sidewalk work that we do. Dropping further down within the admin section lines 31, 32, see, we balanced our tree removal and tree replacement program, 15 grand each. Line 38, street skate, we feel like that's tapered off, leveled off at about 50 grand in the annual maintenance costs there. Turn the page. Not a lot of activity in the highway cost center, we've got a sandwich of overtime and having enough, similar to the departments. Tom mentioned line 87, Tom mentioned Hard Act is an additional five grand. So Hard Act is now up to a total of 15. Kelly and Alan share some joint responsibilities up there. Kelly's got the programmatic piece, Alan's got the infrastructure piece, which you might imagine was overlapped a little bit. And lastly, the CIP for public works, line 110, the street improvement program, that's our paving, annual paving program. And then 256, level funded. And at the bottom, you see the expense item for the debt service on the mini excavator. Public works. My favorite little cost center is coming up, this is the parking program.
Dom, before you want another question? So in years past, we've had, maybe last year, maybe the past three years before, we've had money set aside for individual parks.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's usually in recreation or in public works, but I don't see it either way, so I don't know if we got it.
Look at lines 84 through 86.
Okay, got it. Perfect, thank you.
I wouldn't get rid of funding for a hotel in Spooner Park without talking to you.
Me too.
All right, now we're on to parking program. And on the expense side, we are allocating administrative costs appropriately. We are reserving 50,000 for annual, excuse me, 50,000 annually for future maintenance on garage, as recommended by the folks who built it. And we're still throwing off 25 grand in surplus, so that's what happens when you don't think of the debt service, the TIF pays the debt. This is just the operating side, so we certainly couldn't do that, not without a TIF, but with a TIF, a more great thing about it. I'm just going to touch on the RJC, and I think we are finished with this portion.
We showed this a little different in the budget. Historically, in admin, there's been a $10,000 contribution to the RJC. That dates back to the days when it wasn't a city agency, and so it's a city agency now. We just showed that net operations is costing $10,000, but there's no change in how that's impacted taxes, it's just how we depict it. The big thing to put out in RJC is their grants are not growing. Much of that, much of those come from the state. State is bigger than the feds in that regard. And so what they've tried to do is grow other revenue sources, and they now have a few minor contracts with school districts to essentially teach their services to the teaching staff and administrators there, and that seems to be a growing revenue source for them. So we're working with them to make sure those are priced appropriately so that there's a margin for them when they go out there. The agency in general has drawn leaps and bounds the last two years, and really successfully getting grants that pays for the apartments downtown that they maintain and run, provide services to individuals. And that provides for the ability to give the youth services. They've expanded next door. And something Nina points out to me every day is, as the chief's workload increases, the courts increasingly look to take the minor offenders and give them to her. And so similarly, that's much of the reason why our budget is growing, is that our caseloads are growing. But the net impact is $10,000, that's the same as it was last year, so there's no additional city contribution requested.
Do they work with TRU and C or anything more proactive?
They have a real active TRU and C program.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's it for this portion.
Great, thank you. Let's see. So with that, we'll move into the next portion of the budget agenda. I am hearing from Tim Hawkins, our finance chair, council discussion, and then we'll be open for public comment.
Not much to say. We had a little review of the budget. Offer the things that the city government is offering to the voters, the things that residents and the things that they demand, come up with a budget like this, it would have been unheard of 10 years ago. $50,000 for street skate maintenance. We've never been able to have that before, just as an example of something. I mean, there's some wide swings in chemical usage with PW Public Works or workers' comp things that we don't have control over. We try to get those in, but consistently, if we look at page three of 30, you'll see we're coming very close to budgeting and actual reviews every year. It's closer and closer and closer, it's not a wide swings anymore. And that's just good staffing, good management practice, and I think the citizens and the city council members would be pretty proud of this budget.
Thanks, and I'd like to thank you and members of the finance committee, which are Jim and Mike, and especially thank you for adding some of the analysis that helps us to see that the budget performance has been so on target over the past few years. I think that's, should be noted, so we're performing well in that way.
Oh, and one other thing, I think I mentioned at budget committee, but I'll mention it here. We've always operated under the premise that if the city manager can come in with a budget, we don't go way into the weeds. We don't have that expertise. They have that expertise. So I had questioned in the, in the budget committee whether or not the chief needed to come to us and give us the analysis. It was nice for him to do it, but he presented a budget, and if he thinks with his budget he needs two additional people, then he puts two additional people on. He's the chief, and he knows what's going on in those departments. It was nice for us to hear it, but there's no need to hear it at the budget committee into the presentation that he's going to give tonight. I'm glad he did, but he didn't, certainly didn't have to do it. And I don't think any of us ever look at the fact that, you know, where are you with what you spent on paper towels versus what you spent on paper cups, and what do you do with the extra? You know, bring this in the budget, show us what that department needs to operate under that budget, and let's move ahead and get going. And that's, I think, fosters a good relationship between us and staff and the people who are utilizing those services.
All right, let's see. Council, any further questions or discussion at this stage?
I thought it was a great budget. We talked about all this stuff coming off in '21. What things do we anticipate having to start thinking for, moving forward? We've talked about the, you know, public safety building, newer public safety building, whether that includes fire and PDE or just one or the other. City pool's been discussed. Is there any other projects that we anticipate?
Can we go back to Tim's thing? Yeah, I mean, there's three big things coming down the pipe. Public safety building, I mentioned, pool that you mentioned, and Fonda. We don't have enough information on yet, on those yet, to roll out a plan, and so they're coming, but they're not, they're not ready yet. I'm optimistic that a police proposal might come together in the next few months. It's probably, the order is probably police, pool, Fonda. Police means public safety, and how that public fits together. But that could change overnight. You know, we've gotten the cleanup costs and Fonda, at one point, they were over $2 million, they're now down to half a million. And we have a redevelopment proposal that shows we can get 100,000 square feet, 75 on one floor, 75 to 80 parking spaces, and more water and wastewater than you could ever use, and an awful lot of BOD. So if tomorrow somebody walked in and said, "Boy, I'm looking for something like that," that could change.
Okay, thank you.
Before we get to public comment, just a quick overview of what happens next from this point in terms of timeline.
Could we bookend that with the chief's discussion?
Sure.
Maybe come back to that at the end?
Yeah, yep, okay. All right, public comment on the budget. Does anybody have any input to share? Questions? Yes?
Just a question. Peter DeLorean. I'll take personal questions later. It'll be limited to 15 seconds each. It's going to happen someday to all of you, except possibly Marie, because I know how young she is. Quite, how many city vehicles do we have? And I'm not talking about pile trucks. How many people drive around a vehicle with city license plates on it?
There's a rec vehicle that is shared by those two staff. There's a vehicle assigned to Alan. There's a vehicle assigned to Alan.
Fire department has a pickup truck.
The ones that, that I think catch people's eyes are Alan's and Kelly's. They have pretty unique relationships, and the rest of them are more work trucks, you know.
There's one for parking.
Yes.
We can get you a list, we've got that list ready. In fact, I might even be able to find that on email before the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But there's a difference between, you know, the two I mentioned are the ones that are kind of assigned to those people, may allow some incidental personal use, you know. The rest of them, you know, they pick them up in the morning when they get there.
Right.
Brian, you know, the public works superintendent, and I would put his in that same category. But I can get a number for everybody in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. I'm just looking, and I understand, I know we're just like the governor's city, but you guys do a great job, the city looks great because of you, and I thank you for that. When I was here, all we did was dream, and that's the easy part. You made it happen, and I congratulate you for that. But I think we know we've got big expenditures coming up. In my house, if I know my roof's going to need to be repaired, then I'm going to start putting money aside, and I'm not going to be buying little things. I'm not going to buy a new car or a new bicycle or things like that. I'm going to understand that those are coming up. That's what white people do. Everything has holders of the city's taxpayers' money. That's what we have to do, is draw a line between wants and needs. And that's what we do in our personal budget, if we're going to be successful. Like, I, we want this, but do we really need it? And it comes down to the question of what is the purpose of government? And I know the answer to that, because I just had a meeting with Dick Day. So I know the purpose of government. I can get you, I can get you a, it'll be longer than a one-page email, I can get you a book on that, Don, if you want that.
The Zittebub?
Ah!
The Zittebub, that's it.
But anyway, I think what do we want from, from you people? I think the number one thing we want is, we want to get up and more and know that we're going to be safe where we live. It's nice to have the streets clean, I agree, it's nice to have, might speak loud, I agree with that, but mostly what I want, I want to be safe. And that's why I'm here to support Gary's proposal. If we're not safe, we're nothing. Doesn't matter how beautiful the park is, if it's not safe, nobody's going to go there. When I let my grandkids out during the day, and I should be charged a fee for that, I don't care if they're, I don't worry about the sidewalks, I don't worry about if there's dirt in the street, I worry about are they safe, going to be safe? And due to Gary and his police department, we've attained that, and that wasn't always the case, anybody that's been around Long Island, no, it wasn't. It wasn't. I remember when police didn't even get out of their cars in the dirt and certain types of weather. And I know these guys do, because they've got out twice this last year to ask me for my license and registration. So I know that on a regular basis.
Oh, bastard.
I wouldn't have let you near my car. I would have been driven away.
I think I've been around as long as you have.
I don't know, I don't know if I want to brag though.
Wait, and we're going to be moving into the police discussion shortly, so any other, wait, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to care, comment on the budget presentation?
Can I make one short comment, but his comment?
And Chad also would like to make a comment.
I, I agree with that assessment a hundred percent, Pete, and about seven or eight years ago, we started something called CIP, and capital improvement projects, and that became our savings account. And that's why we budget that, and that takes care of when that roof's going to start leaking, because we know in advance when we're going to need a car, or we know we're going to need, you know, a plow truck, or we know we're going to need something, we're saving for that now for five or six years from now to make that purchase. And that's something, I can remember put saying we want a hundred thousand dollars for water, a hundred thousand dollars for sewer, and we steadfast to get that money. And today, where would we be without that? We've got quite a nest egg with that money in it. So, you're right, I agree with that a hundred percent, but we're doing that and looking at that stuff all the time.
Chad?
So that was going to be part of my comment, and the other part is, you know, when I go to work now for Elton, and I tell people I live in St. Albans, it's, oh my God, the city looks so great. So that's having the beautiful city and maintaining it, is what's drawing these people here that also want to buy homes, buy older homes that are rundown and try to fix them up a little bit, so, you know, we have that little bit too, that adds, helps the city also along.
Okay, let's see. Let's move on to, item ten, thanks. This is Chief Taylor, a request for a street crimes unit funding. We'll hear from Chief Taylor first. Next up is council discussion, then public comment, and then after that, we'll move to eleven, an agenda item in which we'll talk a little bit about next steps. Good evening.
Thank you so much for that, Davey. One of the things that we've done here is worked very hard at figuring out what the capacity of the police department was, and what we were capable of consolidating. City manager's absolutely right, we have done a tremendous amount of work on figuring out the best way to utilize our resources, and we're to the point where we have maximized those. To the extent that I have three patrol officers on per shift, that's the general rule. You know, I, I won't bore you with the details, the three, the long document you have there provides you with the exact number and what their assignments are and what they do, but what happens when we have drug activity in our community is, we know when we hear from community members on a regular basis, the locations where activity is occurring. And we do our best to try to monitor those locations in between going to the calls that we're responsible for, those officers during their shift. So, for example, it's no secret at this point, the National Geographics did a piece a couple of years ago now on the parking lot at Route thirty-six and one oh four, and what they said was absolutely correct, but they made it known to the whole world. And since then, we've had a certain amount of increase in activity there. Not just for the long haulers, and the long haulers for us are the people who haul the dope here, but even our, our locals use that as a place to hook up and do their drug deals. We recall a year ago, a drug deal that went bad started in that parking lot. A motor vehicle pursuit throughout the city occurred, and it ended in the Holy Family's parking lot, where one of the occupants of one of the vehicles got out and shot nine times with a forty caliber handgun, between eight and twelve minutes before the city's school would have been released for the day, and we may have been dealing with that entire pedestrian population on the streets. And then the vehicle fled to Swanton, and, and, and thank goodness for our great relationships with other law enforcement agencies in the area, we're able to bring that to a quick resolution. But the point I'm trying to make to you is that officers between shifts, or between calls, are driving down the road, and they're looking for speeders, they're looking for people running stop signs, they're looking for people running traffic lights, and they're looking for inspection stickers and license plates, and they're watching people crossing the road, and they're looking for things that seem out of the ordinary, and we're asking them to look at, it is no exaggeration, Lieutenant Kuchers is in the room, and he worked for the drug task force and primarily did his work in this community for the last four years, five years, Ben?
About seven years.
Right, seven in all, but I know that for the last half a dozen of those years, he really concentrated here in the city. And when I tell you there are at least sixty locations in the town and city where drugs are being dealt regularly, that the police are familiar with and know about, that is no exaggeration, and that number is probably higher, when you consider that every commuter parking lot, every business parking lot, that's large enough to accommodate a number of vehicles, becomes a point for a transaction. Transaction takes about three minutes from start to finish. The vehicles pull up door to door, windows go down, money goes into one car, dough goes into the other, and it's over with. All of that is arranged before the meeting, so that there's no delay in how that occurs. It's really hit and miss for us to try to do something about that when we're saying, and by the way, when you're not doing all this other stuff in between your calls, I need you to go out and pay attention to the parking lot. And here's fifty-nine other locations that I need you to go pay attention to. It is just physically impossible to do that. In addition to which, because of the issues that we deal with on a regular basis, all of our officers pull at least a second, and in some cases, third role within the organization. So we have an SRT, SRT team, which is a tactical unit, that gives us the ability to stop an incident that we can't control. But those same people who are on that team are the same people who cover those shifts, and the supervising people are covering the shifts, and the in-house drug team, same people. And it goes on and on and on, and I'm not going to bore you with details, except we've reached a saturation point. It's difficult to get people to volunteer to come in on their time off, because they feel like they're already giving much more than they ever signed up for to begin with. So we get to the point where we have to order them in, and it starts up the road and undermines morale. What I'm proposing is really a three-person team, one of those people would come from within the rank and file as a team leader, and we would augment that by paying for two additional officers and equally sharing that cost with the town. And their only job within our organization would be to do the street crimes activity, to go after those locations, and the people that we know are doing, engaging in that activity. And really, there are three, threefold purposes for doing it. One is, sometimes intervention for somebody you love or care about doesn't come in the form of them presenting it to emergency room and saying, I need help. Sometimes they gotta get arrested by the police, and somebody has to get involved and say, what's going on here? And that becomes, for them, the, the ownness of the motivation for them to do something about it. In some cases, it's people who are taking advantage of those people whom I'm most interested in, and the suppliers, because they feed on those weaknesses. And those people need to get a strong message from us, that we see you, and we know what you're doing, and we're not going to tolerate it here. And lastly, we need to boom out of our community. They need to understand that we're going to use whatever legal, ethical, and moral tools are available to us to ensure that they find it extremely unpleasant to conduct their business in our community. Whether that means knocking on the door and telling them, do we have information that they're selling drugs, and seeing where that conversation leads us, to simply seeing us on their street, running plate numbers, or taking pictures of vehicles in their driveway on a regular basis. I know that's a little bit in your face, but I think we've reached a point where we have to be a little bit in people's face here. It's not a huge amount of money. Hey, to be honest with you, those of us who are here about this have just come from a town select board meeting, where we met with overwhelming unanimous support from the select board for them to be equally in with us. Based on personal experience, that's a little bit unusual. There was a tremendous amount of support there, even though there were, of course, Dick Day and some other individuals who are better known for being interested in the larger conspiracy. I'm asking you as politely as I know how, and I have nothing to, I, there's no reason to blow smoke up anybody's tailpipe here. This is what it is. What I'm proposing is something I've done research on, on the internet, you can all look for yourself, and you can see, this is one of the answers that's being utilized by law enforcement across the country. In every case, it's uniquely tailored to the communities and the neighborhoods that are being served by it. It would give us a unique advantage of having these resources available to target these individuals, to target the streets we know they're in, low problems, and if it doesn't work, then we stop funding it, and it goes away. I'm not proposing that somehow these officers just get absorbed into the department, and this is one more way the government grows itself. If it doesn't work, let's not do it.
Chief, do you, can you share some examples of how you would measure success, or?
So it would be, we would rely on data, real data, for activities and results. And, and everybody has to understand, it might take us a little bit to get a foundation built under us, but I need to, I want to know how many motor vehicle stops are being done, and what streets were on, and what doors were knocking on, and we're going to get that on a regular basis. Now, I'm more than happy to report that out in whatever form we agree that it needs to be reported out on. The other thing is, I've already heard from another potential leader in law enforcement in this county about interest. You know, success breeds success. If this works for us, then other people are going to want to try to get on board too, because the reality is, I confess, that it's not the best plan in the world to push people into another community. I don't get paid to protect their communities, I get paid to protect these communities. And maybe what it's going to take is all of us getting on the same sheet of music and all pushing at the same time to get them out of our area, but I can only change the part of the world that I have some responsibility over. You know, this is a huge issue, and I think we all know it, from the governor's office down, and I'm not proposing that this will be the solution that we've all been waiting for, but I'm telling you that this, in my opinion, is needed. I think it will work, I'm prepared to do whatever is necessary to, to give you the evidence of its success, and if we don't see evidence of its success, let's not do it. With that, I like to be quiet, just in case someone else asks me that, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
First, I think we all would like to share our thanks and appreciation for twenty-four seven, day in and day out, the efforts and the willingness of all of your officers to look there, helping while being on the line for ours. I like the targeted approach, I think it's definitely an idea that is absolutely worth trying, it's, to me, will meet some of the concerns that I know I've been hearing from members of the public, and I suspect other counselors as well. It's frustrating when, as a resident of a neighborhood, you're seeing activity happening, and we don't have the resources to show up and change that. It's very frustrating. I, so I'm supportive of a targeted approach, and I like the idea of thinking about how we measure it over, you know, the next three years or so, because I think you're right, that if we're successful in this, and we can point to what's working, it's good for us, and it will be good for Franklin County and surrounding communities as well.
If I could just add, I have personally met with the US attorney and shared this idea. I've met with the state's attorney for our county. We have met with the deputy chief of the Burlington Police Department, because many of the bad guys we're dealing with come from Burlington, and we just push them up and down the interstate, and vice versa. They have a street crimes unit. This is really what kind of recharged our, our generators to go in this direction, and our intention would be to be in continual communication and to meet with them and to be sharing knowledge, and maybe even resources on those occasions where we can, to try to interdict and stop this from happening.
Council, questions?
We've got lots of room, but I'll go last this time.
Okay. Mike?
I just wanted to, first a comment and then a question. I've never seen the kind of positive response to a proposal that would increase spending that I did to this one. The number of calls from people in the board that have gotten emails over the last few days since the messenger article ran, it's just been incredible and supportive, the chief's proposal. I did want to ask, in, in terms of the other communities that have street crimes units, whether they've seen those just be siloed or integrate with the other community policing resources that we have here in the community, what your experience is with that?
So the intention would be, if you, if you look at the police department and just hypothetically said, there's two big circles, there's uniform patrol services, and there's everything else. The intention would be, this would be a standalone circle that would move around on this chart, this chain of command, if you will. So, for example, there are going to be cases that really do need to be referred to the DEA's office or the US attorney, and those are going to be a little more time-consuming, and they take more people, more boots on the ground. There's no reason why the detectives can't work with the street crimes unit to do that. But what I don't want is for this to be that hip hop parade parade where everybody becomes a prima donna, and suddenly, because of what they do, you know, they kind of are held in this, you know, I worked in the drug unit many years ago, and I have to tell you that I think they do great work. It's easy to develop a mental It's easy to develop a mental attitude about exclusivity of what you do. I don't want that to happen. I anticipate that sometimes it'll be in uniforms, sometimes it'll be in plain clothes, sometimes they'll use marked cards, sometimes they'll use unmarked cards, sometimes they'll be on foot. You know, when we have a rash of car wrecks, I can tell you, those car wrecks are occurring to feed somebody's hat. Somebody's looking for money. Seldom is it simply vandalism. It's a crime of opportunity. And they go down the street and every door that's unlocked becomes the one that they go into and they help themselves. You know, I want to chase those people down. I will tell you that in the last three years, every bank robbery we have had has been related to drugs and every armed stick-up we've had has been related to drugs. Any home invasions that we have had are related to drugs. Either a dependency and a need for money and sources or in most cases, it's meant to be a rip-off. Somebody's raped, robbing somebody that they know has either dope or money in the house. Seldom do people go, "Mike McCarthy, I think I'm going to go rob him tonight." That doesn't happen. What does happen is, people have been in and out of my house all day and they know I'm moving a lot of product and I got a lot of cash on hand. That becomes an issue, particularly when they get the house across the road, which has now happened to a Street Times where the house next door. You know, we had the situation where the individual gets the house next door and the guy wakes up in the middle of night to a guy with a ski mask on and a handgun pointed to his head and it's him, his wife, and his kid. And when the guy realizes he's got the wrong house, he forces the home occupants to round up the electronics and put them in the middle of the floor and they load those into the home occupants' vehicle. And then he finds out that he has an ATM card and forces him to go to the ATM and give him a counterbalance. And when he sees it's $55, he orders him to take out $50 and give it to him and then he throws the guy out of the truck and takes off. I can't imagine the horror of that, in the middle of the night, waking up to that. And as your police chief, I feel compelled to do something about that. That's just one example.
John?
Anyone else before I go?
I just have a quick question. Do you think two officers is enough? Do they need more?
That's a great question. The short answer is, I don't know. But you know, I think that Peter DeLorean will support me in this when I say that I got asked a long time ago, "How many more cups do you need?" in a public meeting and I said, "I don't know. Let me fill the positions I got that are open first and figure out what our capacity is. Let's try this and see what happens." And let's see if this is the capacity we need to do it or if it isn't. Again, I don't have any reason not to be completely transparent with you and tell you the truth. It won't take us long to figure out whether it's the right number or not.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing... I spent a lot of time on social media. Nothing angers me more than seeing people on there saying, "What a drug problem this has and what a drug capital we are and how they want to move away from here. They can't stand it anymore." And I think this is a very great proactive step too, answering those questions and showing that we're not and that we're going to do something about it.
Right, and it needs to be said in this meeting, it's airtime, public access. This problem affects every community in this state and every state in this country.
Absolutely.
Ted?
Okay, so I have one question before I say anything. Do you think the new BART facility is going to have a positive impact on the community?
I'm not sure I know you're talking...
The new treatment facility, so people...
So this is what I would tell you. I think that may cuts both ways. I know people, good people, friends, neighbors, people from the community who feel good about some of the work that they're seeing coming out of there because they have family members or they know people who've gotten involved in that program and they think it's a godsend. I've also heard from people who say, "It kind of puts all these people in our community and if they have less than honorable intentions, we're at risk." I don't think we've seen so much that side of it. I think we're going to have to judge it day to day to day. And the truth is, if 100 people go there and helps 10, that's 10 fewer than what we had in the mix before. And we had no say or control about that anyway. So I think we're making the best of it.
I just, I thought it was, you know, I'm supportive of it. So I was just wondering if you thought that would have a positive effect. I do also want to say I'm really supportive of this. My much better half has started to compile a list for you. I started it on Saturday and it's going to be a book. My, I want to make sure is when we have line items, sometimes we move money from one item to find another because another one's, you know, gone over budget. I want to make sure we don't do that with this. So when I tell a taxpayer, "We're spending money on this," I want to make sure that it's going to this and not to something else.
You have my straight face, Tess. The money is going to be spent on the street crimes.
And I'm not worried about you. I just want to make sure that when I say that, I'm saying that, you know, 100% that this is what it's going to be used for. So I don't know how we can, is there a way that we can do that? I mean, I could say, yes, have a separate item on the ballot, right? And then basically that forces you to use that money for that. But I don't want to do that.
I think we're going to know through oversight and you're going to hear as often as I think you want from the manager or myself, exactly what we're doing and where is the proof in the pudding? Because I think that is there. And I'm telling you that I'll get you that proof. I'll produce that for you as regularly as necessary. I intend to meet with those individuals regularly. I think the manager I talked about today, he wants to be involved in those meetings too. I don't see that there will be anything that won't be completely transparent about this.
Just, we're talking about two positions. They're old or they're not filled. What are you thinking?
No, they're not going to be used to fill the ship because someone called out sick. Okay, that came up already. We've had that conversation. My commanders will tell you that some people in the organization are a little disappointed. I said, "Don't." If this is what we're getting the money to do, this is what we're going to do. We'll continue to figure out how we do those things, the same as we always have.
That's it. Okay, thank you.
That's it?
That's all we've got?
All right. Okay, public comment. Anybody in the public? Yes?
So if the program is successful and it gets more drugs off the street, is there something in place for all of the addicts that can be out there who are saying they're desperate? Because, you know, I mean, like as the supply goes down, you know, prices go up, which could be more theft and stuff like that. So is there any kind of plan to be proactive in, as you get the drugs off the street, help those people who are then going to be desperate to get them?
So I'll look to Chief, if you've got some thoughts. You didn't mention some intervention that you expected would take place. This is a new concept. So the reality is that this is unfolding as we're waters right now. So you raised a good point.
We've formed some pretty strong coalitions already. I think Mary could speak to some of that if you wanted her to. I think with the hospitals as well. What I would tell you is, I envision that new partnerships or maybe even partnerships that have been a little stagnant will be recharged or revitalized by this. I can't imagine that everybody who has an interest in this isn't going to raise their hand to say, "How can we play a role here?" That's just my thing. Do you think that's true, Mary?
Yeah, I agree.
Thanks. Anything else? Yes, David first and then I'll head to the back for Mr. Coffee.
Okay. David, I had a couple, a few questions with Chief. One was, what was the resolution of the incident you referred to a couple times about the drug dealers going to the wrong house, robbing and then...
So he was arrested. It was a big pursuit, a very large pursuit, that ended in the Masistow Reserve over in Swanton. He was arrested. He's a career criminal. I made contact with the U.S. Attorney's Office because they're interested in same neighborhoods programs and prosecuting people like that. When I talked to that, our new U.S. Attorney, three weeks ago, I think it was now, I brought that back up and she was going to re... She said that she would re-attempt to get in contact with the state's attorney and see what they could do. When I brought up the shooting incident, she said she would take a look at that. I anticipate as we kick this off, we'll have that first meeting that will include the U.S. Attorney's Office, the state's attorney, Burlington Police, ourselves, and we'll have that conversation again. But that guy is sitting in jail.
Catch him, Coffee.
There have been two others and we have a couple of people responsible for that. In one case, an individual woke up and the individual had kicked in their front door and he physically wrestled with him at the front door to force him back out. And in another case, the bad guy was simply scared away because there were too many people present and waiting in the house.
Second question, surveillance cameras. I'm not really that familiar with parking rite other than I know it's near Hawksness. First of all, who owns the parking rite? Is it the state of Vermont? So would they be willing to install, if there aren't already surveillance cameras there? Are there surveillance cameras?
There are not. I have a call-in to someone and I'm not sure that that is as simple or straightforward as you think. It might be and I'm trying to fair enough line out the wrinkles on that.
But they have been approached about it?
I have, that is a works.
And then you mentioned other parking lots are likely candidates for this activity. You know, if it's Walmart parking lot, not saying as I would know, you know, the High Deep Shopping Center parking lot, whether it's the Food City or the, you know, North Main Street parking garage, which we do have surveillance cameras in because we're in the city owned it. Have the owners of any of these properties been approached to install at their cost surveillance cameras? I mean, and if not, why can't the city draft a letter to these owners? I mean, they have surveillance cameras in the stores.
Cameras are on the end all. We use cameras. This is the problem with cameras. If nobody monitors them and knows what's on them, there's nothing to look at because they just do loops over and over and over and over. So for example, we have cameras in the parking garage. And once Martin becomes aware of an issue and contacts the police department, we can grab that film or he can grab that film and we can do something about it. We know what it is we're looking for. It would cost a fortune to monitor every camera that we personally look at as a community, round the clock. So it is a part of the solution. It's not the whole solution, but it's not lost on any of us. The technology is a good part of all of us.
And the last quick question was, in Rutland, they've had some success, I understand, in seizing drug properties that have, you know, repeat, you know, drug contact and arrests and dealings and seizing the properties from the landowner, the property owner, the department owner and selling them and using their proceeds to pay for, you know, mitigation, whether it's policing or cameras or whatever, you know, police car or drug sniffing dogs. Have we yet where that's been...
We have, in fact. We have one case in particular that just finished going through forfeit here on Lower Gilman Street. And we're right now in a situation where the city will do what it's interested in doing or it will be sold by the U.S. Marshals and monies will be divided among the participating investigating agencies. Yes, we do that on a regular basis. We seize assets.
There's this narrative coming out of Rutland though that Rutland on its own motion without assistance from the U.S. Attorney using their visible powers seizes.
So that's untrue. I know the chief down there pretty well. And we also had a conversation about seven weeks ago, I think. And when it comes to the seizure of the real estate property because of the technicalities involved, they rely on the federal government and the federal state seizure statutes. So the U.S. Attorney's Office has to adopt that case and agree to go forward with that. There are two types of seizures. One is criminal and one is civil. With real estate, there has to be a hearing, a trial for that property before any seizure can occur. Because it's a forced move on the government to take property from the citizen.
So what's, and I'm thinking of houses that, you know, heard and suspect or you think you see, you know, apartment buildings. What's the first step? Do you send a letter, you know, "Dear landlord, you know, you've had 18 complaints and you've showed up six times this past year regarding drug activity, your property." What's the, you know, what happens to get to that point where we finally, where you finally suggest to the U.S. Attorney that this house needs to be seized?
I'd like to make a suggestion. Maybe you have a brief answer to this, but let's get back to budget.
Sure. Dear apartment owner in the room, I will tell you that we are working to develop the workshop. I want to work hand in hand with those people to see what we can do to assist the U.S. Attorney's Office. He pledged to me that they have some help in that arena also. So my hope is that we're all going to work together a lot more closely than we ever have before.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, thanks. Frank Coffee, I'm not a St. Albans city resident and thank you for allowing me to come here. I do own a property in the town. I wanted to first start off by complimenting First Dom and the city council for everything you've done in the revitalization of the downtown, the infrastructure and the tip and all this work. Coming, growing up here in St. Albans, like all of you, I'm really proud of what you've done. I think Dom's the best manager in the state and I hope you do too. I'm here to support Gary and this proposal tonight. If this scourge hasn't hit you or your family in some way, it may and I hope it doesn't. I personally have had impacts in our family twice. And we lost my daughter and my nephew is permanently disabled because of all of this activity. When you see a street, when you drive down a street and see the sidewalks crumbling or failing infrastructure, you can see it. You're not going to take care of it. Something like this, you don't see it unless you're looking for it. And you don't see it until it's almost too late. And like, this is not a problem that is exclusive to St. Albans or Franklin County or Vermont. It's happening everywhere in this country. And it's bad. It is, it's really bad. But great communities like this one do the same thing that you did with our infrastructure. And they invest in enforcement and treatment and prevention and education. And that's what we have to do. And I compliment the chief on what he's doing. I hope you will support this. A number of us just came from the town select board and they unanimously supported it. I hope it'll make a difference. And it, you know, it just won't begin and end here. It's got to continue on in the state's attorney's office and with judges and through law enforcement throughout county and the state. Jim knows the legal system really well, is this temp. And these law enforcement officers work really hard to build a case. They build the case, then the prosecutor tries to build his case. At times, the defendant gets a really good attorney and they plea out of it or they get a break on their first time, they reoffend. And then we have judges that just aren't tough enough. And so, you know, it's a little bit of everything. It's certainly a challenge. And this isn't like 40 years ago when people were experimenting with marijuana and you smoked a joint and you got high once. Heroin is not like that. And people have moved from pills to heroin. And once you make that shift, that's a shift that's really, really hard to recover from. So thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and I hope you'll support the chief and his proposal.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Hertz Russo. I own Hertz Automotive. I have a lot of customers that come in that live in the town and the city, always hearing drug problems, breaking in and trains and stuff like that. Talked to Dom probably a couple of weeks ago. Had him on the phone for 45 minutes. Some of the recordings I played him. Some of the recordings I played him, he was amazed about what he was hearing on the machine. I've been in the rental business for 33 years. I have a 600 apartment building I'm getting rent for three, just because the drug dealer moves here, moves right next door into the other apartment. Don't want to rent those because I don't want to get in a mix of people in there that is going to be bad for the building. The gentleman right there, I think he was saying, wow, can you seize this property? If you give somebody so much information, why would they have the right to seize it? Anyways, I got over 400 drug deals that have been done. And, you know, there's other problems that come with it. You know, it's like they say, the city looks good. It does look good. But say you have this person, you go home, he's the nicest person, and inside he's a monster. That's what St. Albans is starting to bid, is a monster inside that you guys don't see because we, I see it all day. And frankly, I know Frank really good, sort of got his daughter. So the landlords, what they're doing is they jump from the couch surf, they jump from one apartment to another, and the police department says, okay, if he stays in your apartment building, after two weeks, he becomes your tenant, even though you don't have a lease with him. Just the person that you have a lease with is your tenant, but not really because the other guy stayed there two weeks later. And so that makes it hard. So the guy could do all the research as far as getting a tenant in there, and somebody slides into the door. I know another person, he's here, maybe he'll speak, I'm not truly sure, but he's had problems. He got rid of one drug dealer, he got a worse one. And he did his research. And this, but I told the police tomorrow I would come here to back them up and that's what I'm doing.
Thank you very much.
I would probably be the other guy. I'm Tyler Stenhouse. I own roughly 70 apartments between St. Albans and Swan. And I have one building in particular, I'm sure Chief Taylor's pretty familiar with it on Kingdom Street. And you can't keep them out of there. Once one comes in, I start the eviction, it takes me anywhere between eight and 10 months because they know what they're doing. I had one person that didn't show up to a single court date and it took me 13 months to get her out. Because then she put a stay on it and said I was a terrible landlord and whatever. So I am supportive of additional resources for that particular thing because it is extremely hard to be a landlord right now and get quality tenants. But all my other buildings, I got just that one. You guys want to buy that? But yeah, so I agree.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
Hi. My name's Mary Finkner. I work for the Vermont Department of Health, Alcohol and Drug Abuse Programs, and I have a substance abuse prevention consultant. And thank you for this opportunity and thank you for your idea. I know that I have worked in this field for a long time, either as a, for alcohol and drug abuse programs or as a clinical social worker and licensed alcohol and drug abuse clinician, particularly with children and adolescents. And this is a problem. It's been here many, many years and it's not going to be an easy fix. And what I hope that you recognize, and I know we've already started some chatting, is that, you know, having one intervention doesn't fix this problem. And having, you know, seizing properties are great, but it also reduces housing, which is dire. I'm working with three people for, I don't actually work with people today, but I do work with people and all three are homeless. And it's cold out today and it's frustrating. So having great housing would be wonderful. Having the opportunity for the mayor to help expedite addiction processes is great. Having mental health and substance use for that, you know, professionals to be there. If we arrest people and they do spend time in jail, there is no treatment in jail. You cannot mandate somebody for treatment unless they're actually willing and accept it. So what are some alternatives? Can we push more screening before arraignment for those opportunities? One of the things is that is when you are dealing with people who are actively using their substances, there is crime involved. And many times when you are, people who find recovery don't ever commit those crimes. But when you sober a horse thief, you are still left with a horse thief. And those are the folks that you will see over and over again in your criminal justice system. You know, they're the same folks. How do we target those folks over those who are really struggling with addiction? There, we know that prevention works. You know, you guys have been a great support to us. We know that treatment is available. There's two parts to that. Is, is, is not having the substance that you use to make your life bearable on you. You know, we have medicated assisted treatments now that help reduce those cravings. But the second part of that is creating behavior change. And this community has been opening, open and welcoming around, building a community that people can find health and wellness in, and that behavior change comes with that. I also know that when we are looking towards law enforcement, this problem, we are spending a lot of time perhaps not being as open and responsible for ourselves and that there is a lot of patience and love and tolerance and grief. People don't become users or substance users overnight. When we're dealing with opiates, it's much quicker. You become easily addicted within weeks, if not months, when you're addicted to opiates. And yet it takes a long time to have those same problems when we use, overuse alcohol, like 40 years worth as opposed to three years. So the folks that you see are people who are young and are strong and are angry and full of a lot more hormones and are not fully developed to make wise and thoughtful decisions. And so that is another mitigating factor and how do we support those? And you are gracious when the historic Justice Center was looking for a home, that you opened that up and that is yet another opportunity. We need to do this all together and we need to do it from every aspect. What I do know is that this is not something that's going to be fixed overnight and it's not something that's going to, to be magically go away. Because if it's not one thing, it's going to be something else. I think the key is, is that we need to spend a little time being more thoughtful about who we are as a people and as a community and that the children of the community are the ones that are suffering today. And they grow up to be tomorrow's addicts. You know, it's not those people, we are those people. And I sit here as a person who works in prevention, who has, who's spent many years in treatment and wins a life of recovery. And it's difficult to sit here and point blank that people who are users or people who were users have no value and that is, that is discriminatory at times, but more so it's, it cuts short a whole population of people that can be active and productive citizens in our community. And one of the reasons to have the BART system, the BART Treatment Center here was that people weren't traveling and so that people could have the opportunity to build a life here. And that life is for everybody and not just those who pay. And addiction impacts everybody. People who are in the business of dealing, it doesn't matter where you live, if you live in a higher income level, a bigger house, it just means that you have a little bit more fat in your bank account before you get into the trouble of having to make hard decisions like, do I rob the bank or do I, you know, do I, do I essentially spend my evening having seizures because I have no medicine or that drug that I've been caught up in? We do have a lot of proactive things that are going on. We have a prescription monitoring system, which is helping, which has created guidelines. And those things are all triggered and actively being used so that people who prescribe medication are being more responsible with that. And that's the type, those type of changes started here in this community, you know, quite a while ago. So that's another thing that we can say check.
So if we were, in the context of this conversation, I think what you're, I don't mean to cut you off, but to, you're pointing out the multi-prong approaches that a compassionate community would be taking. We're talking about enforcement, we're talking about prevention, treatment, recovery, it ends being coordinated and compassionate in that approach.
And that's the partnerships, I think, that Gary was talking about there and the end of the agency.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Tim Smith. I just have one comment, maybe a question for Gary. I definitely support this, no doubt about it. I think back, Peter, when you were mayor and you brought it up about putting more police officers on and probably got a little bit more pushback than what you're hearing tonight, obviously.
From the Smith family.
It's amazing to see, it's amazing to see how the tide has shifted here to, that people realize the value of this and the value of our police department. From a resident's point of view, my, if I had a criticism, is I don't think we promote our successes enough. And I know there's a lot going on. I don't know where you draw the line between what you can share and what you can't share, but I think, I think the majority of the citizens in the region have to hear about your successes to continue the support that you're giving. And I guess, I guess, I'd be curious about your, your comments on that. I'd like to, I'd like to hear more about what, not now, but as this moves forward, how you can promote your successes.
I'll try to be short. Part of the problem is dragging about or, or talking about successes often involves angering 50% of the population. Because that's done in the form of a press release or it's done on a social media site where people can see and hear and comment if they wish on what's going on. And that may cut both ways because it's never been my intention to stigmatize this community. But I've been criticized for doing that because I do too many press releases.
It's just a forum for people to be hostile and not have to be accountable for what they say.
So much of the success.
I'm not talking social media as much as.
Yeah, so I would tell you that I'm open to have ideas about how we could do that and maybe do it better than the way we do it already. We try to. It's hard for the police to blow their own horn because everybody expects them to. Everybody goes, of course he says that, he's the police chief. Of course they said that.
They're the cops, that's what they do.
So it's very hard to be, I'm a community member too. I am friend, I've had friends and neighbors with, I can't even tell you how many people. I know people individually and I've known them long before I started working here. And I feel as passionate as all of you do about getting the biggest bang for our buck that we can and celebrating our successes. I think though, in my mind, because I come from the law enforcement perspective, my idea of the celebration might be different than yours. So when we have to engage with a shooter on a public street and we can make that stop and no innocent person gets injured, I think that's a success. And I think that the press release that follows that is hard bragging about our success. At the same time, some people might say, you have a really cold heart and you think differently than the rest of us. But I am wide open to ideas on how we might do that better.
I think one of the problems is when people come into the hands of law enforcement and go through the court system and find recovery and several years later, you're not really open to talking about that necessarily and your success is three years later. And so it takes a lot of hard change and hard thought to be able to have that. So it's not really a big hooray anymore, it's a, you know, it's a good job, but the instinct that made that change.
So again, I'd like to suggest, it's a really great topic that warrants much more conversation. So I look forward to seeing that unfold. I think for right now, I'd like to bring us back to the, the funding proposal that's at hand to see if there's any more public comment on chief's request relative to funding. And then what we'll do from there is we'll move to agenda item number 11 in which the council will potentially convey sentiments and direction for next steps. So any more public comment? Thank you very much to everybody who has come out this evening to share your thoughts. We can move on to agenda item number 11. Council members, we've got two items to consider, I believe that's the intention. One is providing direction generally on the FY19 budget proposal and then if there's anything specific to the street crimes unit.
Do you think? I think a direct motion and approval on the budget is an approval of the, of the criteria.
Yeah, then I would suggest make that motion.
Then I'll make that motion that the council approved the FY19 budget proposal presented by the city manager administration. I'll second that.
Further discussion? Harry, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Next steps.
We need to adopt a warning by the end of the month. Point nine, I think, is the deadline. We usually meet on Mondays for formal actions. Why don't you give me a week or two to see how things true happen if we have an additional special article? And then if it's straightforward, if it's just the budget and the elections, then we can have a conference call and the folks can come in and sign it. If other issues emerge in the next coming weeks with regard to, you know, redevelopment opportunity or something, then we can get back together to talk about that. But at this point, I think it's just the budget.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We have a couple more items that will go quickly. Folks are welcome to stay to the bitter end. We're going to move on to meeting minutes and approval of warrants and then other business, just to give you a sense. And if you do want to go, you want to go first.
Motion to approve minutes December 11, 2017.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, got it. All in favor?
Aye.
You said two? Oh, I thought you said two of us. All right. Warrants.
Motion to approve warrants, all, 2017.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Is that the one that, where one was paid to you?
Yeah, they paid him.
Motion to approve warrants, 1/518.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Other business? Is there any other business? Yes.
I had a couple of members of my ward call about noise complaints related to what appeared to be modified vehicles with illegal exhaust. This is something that I know is more seasonal typically. I want to thank Chad and Spooner for giving me some of his perspective and just ask that there be an opportunity as we get into the summer season and the next time that the Public Safety Committee meets, that it may be given an opportunity for us to take a look at ordinances and see if we might get some advice to how we might better deal with those issues in the future. I know it's a really sticky one, it seems to keep coming up. Other than this particular police proposal that we heard tonight, I think it's the thing since in the last few months that I've been on the council, that it's the thing I've heard the most about is just the noise complaints in, in the neighborhood. And I know that there are certain kinds of vehicle modifications that are really popular now. It may not be a place where we can really make that much highway, but I'd love for us to at least have a discussion about it and only to pass along requests, especially from one of my neighbors on Bishop Street.
I thought that, I received a similar answer.
I have two that will go into my own noise complaint with my neighbors in White Street with their loud music with the window open or in, where their car doors open with their ferking of the cars and blasting so everybody can hear it. And I think that's also a noise issue that we need to address.
Okay. Any other business?
Everyone knows that the light on Newton Main is out of whack.
Laura Walden is the same. It doesn't register. I had to stop the other day on Main Street again and there was no one coming up or down and they were just sitting there at nine o'clock at night waiting their red light by themselves. It just turned red.
I didn't get my text.
Then the light to go up turned, but I'm still in a red.
Chip, that's, that's new, isn't it? The one on.
Yeah, we'll check the, you can check the vehicle detection on that. The state just installed it.
I think it might just be because it's so cold.
I think it might just be because it's so cold.
Well, that happened to my daughter-in-law and there was a cruiser in the next lane. So she just took off, I mean, she sat there for five minutes, she took off and the cruiser picked her up and she said, "Well, the problem with the light."
Okay, anything else?
I just want to thank Alan, I think it should have did a great job. National storm, it ran on top of us. As hard packed as everything was and how fast it came down and seemed to like freeze, I think they did a good job.
Yeah. I'll second that.
The sidewalks are great.
All right.
We have an ability at some point to recognize the police officers who are involved and we can have an attempt to do that publicly.
Is the investigation still underway?
Need to get past the agents' work and then assuming that comes out, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Sergeant?
All in favor?